But that is not on the agenda again. We did not receive a complete packet from the applicant. I'll at least say that up front if somebody wanted to leave. You're welcome to stay.
How do we, as part of the community, get a copy of the report? So we can see what the plans actually look like. Will we eventually be able to see it?
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't have an official.
We don't have anything official yet.
Got it.
There's multiple plans and they haven't landed on one just yet.
Perfect, okay.
If you look at the township website, there's a calendar. If you scroll halfway through, there's a calendar. And if you click on the date, it'll tell you what's, it'll show the agenda and the packet. And it's always available a week before every scheduled meeting.
And then how does it work? Do we make comments and then there's a vote? Or how does it actually work? How does determination come?
We will have a vote and then that'll go on to the Township Board.
Okay. For the commission votes and the board, but will we have an opportunity to speak before you guys vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking for public input.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to make a comment about the tonight?
Yeah, if you want to stay.
There's nothing to be heard, so you just make your public comment and then that's the end of it. Because there's nothing to hear tonight.
You can state your feelings on it. We're not voting on anything tonight.
There's no discussion about the town.
Is it documented somewhere from therapy?
It gets put in the minutes, but it, the meeting that it matters at is when they're on the agenda.
So there's no plan that's voted on, right?
Today, there's nothing to vote on today.
Yeah.
And if you want to submit.
If you guys go around it to approve it, then I still have to go to the board.
Township.
Yes.
And so don't believe everything you see on social media. But you might, you might go to the social media that is the Township Facebook page or the Township website, and there you'll find the correct information.
Or call or email me. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator. I set the agenda, so if you want to call me anytime, feel free.
Do you have a card or anything?
I have one on me, but I mean, if you just want to.
I'll take a picture out, how about that?
Sure, there you go.
You want to steal your last card?
No problem.
This is probably more excitement than the township has had in a long time.
Wow.
As far as points, this was on the agenda.
Actually, for the planning, it's never been officially on the agenda.
Haven't had this much controversy for a while.
No.
The township board probably has, but.
Rumors were out there that it was, but it was never put on.
I got an email from you saying it was going to be moved to this meeting. Potentially moved to the meeting if everything was okay.
Sorry about that. What bothers me is nobody knows how to get information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We understand that, thank you.
We get it.
Thanks for your input.
Very well noted, thank you.
Nobody will stay to see. Yeah, no kidding. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, September 2nd, I believe, 2021. Please rise and join us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Yansho, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gallings, Mr. Banderski, and Mr. Anderson. Planning consultant, Giffords Webster. We have Matt, I'll look up your name, Wojcikowski, and our Township zoning, Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Jeremy Smith. First thing on the agenda would be approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes other than, I guess there's a couple, or at least one item that's noted under new business that's been withdrawn, is that correct?
Correct.
So no need to go through that one, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Support. Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Yansho to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Approval of the minutes of our August 5th, 2021 meeting, Mr. Banderski.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the draft of the meeting minutes and found everything in order, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated for August 5th, 2021.
Support. There's a motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Anderson. Any other comments or discussion? Now that vote is in order, all those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Next is an opportunity for public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. The only thing that we have on the agenda this evening is regarding the administrative site plan review waiver for FISH. If anyone's here to talk about anything else, now would be the time if they'd like to address the Planning Commission.
Barbara Baumgartner, 5101 Briar Ridge Court, Tanglewood subdivision. I'm here again. I see that it is, I thought it was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, but evidently it's been moved to another time. And that's of the proposal for, or the petition to rezone McCandlish Road for the apartments. So I'm just here to speak to that. I have some concerns about it that I respectfully ask that the board consider when it comes time to make the decision. And that is that the master plan, when I reviewed it, said that the township desired to ensure that new development in the area is congruent with and complements development in the area that's already existing and that the, you know, that it adds, ensures that it complements the existing area. Based on what I saw from, I believe it was the July 8 meeting when they were showing the proposed outline for it, it didn't look like it really complemented the existing property in the area. And, look here, got a couple more things to add. That they, the Township master plan also speaks to the preservation of green space. And this particular project appears to allow very little green space. I was also concerned, based on the architectural drawings, that there really are not even any designated play areas for children. I assume there would be children living there. And furthermore, there was no designated areas for guest parking, so I have no idea where these people would be parking. And again, the traffic concerns, I think that those have already been addressed and some of the hazards that would propose, especially I come out Appleway in the winter onto McCandlish Road, and that's hard enough to turn out without any additional traffic as it is now. So just another thing that I would like people to keep in mind, that that could cause some problems. There are other people in neighborhoods that also are faced with the same thing. So those are just a few things that I would like the board to please keep in mind when the proposal to rezone that from R1 to multiple density housing comes up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to address the Planning Commission?
Would possibly. John Strom, 429 Crestview, here to talk about the fish organization and Barb Smith. Barb has worked out of her own house for many decades, operating the fish organization. At one time she told me she had about five different locations throughout the township in the city to hold her food and different supplies that she would need for her fish organization. And when one location needs the space back that they generously donate to her, then she's forced to negotiate and move to another place quickly. Any normal person would give up or downsize, but she's growing and she's quickly outgrowing every place that she's negotiated for at this point. The building that was generously donated by a local businessperson, Mr. Nanoshi, is a perfect location for her operation. And most importantly, it's close to the people that she serves. The location is prime for where she needs to be. In its heyday, the location was a popular business for many years, but now this blighted building can now be reformed into a community hub. And I think that that would be a better, better use for that building. She provides messaged food blankets and clothing for all of our neighbors in need. And she, through all of this, asks for no recognition. She shies away from compliments and every time I talk to her, she tells me that the people she serves are the real heroes. For the roughly 20 years I've known Barb, she facilitates countless community events, Shop With The Hero, as well as the Christmas basket deliveries with the schools in which she coordinates with the students and the faculty to collect food, money, clothing, and gifts so they can all be donated to all the different families on top of everything else that she does. And every single year, there's approximately 20 families that specifically benefit from her programs at Christmas time. Not only does she save lives by making life livable for her pantry, but she also literally saves lives. I'll close with a story that happened just a few days ago. One of her many food deliveries from her pantry, Barb knocked on a door from one of the people she serves. She didn't get an answer, knowing this person should have answered the door. Come to find out, he had been down on the floor for four days. The police department made entry and now he's at the hospital giving the services he so needs instead of the grim alternative, of course, which could have happened. So had it not been for her stopping by, it could have been very, very, very bad. So just another way that she provides a great service to this community. But she will never tell you that story. Extremely humble herself. It's impossible to pat herself on the back. But that's one example of many that I can personally attest to and her amazing organization. Please consider accommodating any zoning or planning requests from Ms. Smith so she can continue to accommodate our needy residents and give her this much-needed permanent space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wanted to address the Planning Commission? All right, we'll get to the FISH site plan review waiver in a minute. We did receive a number of emails this week. I know these are all within the last month, I think most of them were in the last week, regarding the McCandlish Road. There's an email from Walter Simons, opposed to the potential rezoning. There's an email from Aaron Simons, also opposed to the rezoning. I'm sure I'm going to butcher a couple of these names here, but Fenglin Chang is also opposed to the rezoning. Received an email from him. Xinping Zhang, like I said, I'm probably butchering the name, but also opposed to the rezoning. And Feiz Katab sent an email, also opposed to the rezoning. And Hazar Abashar is also opposed to the rezoning. And their emails, they get into a little bit more detail of their reasons, varying anywhere from traffic, noise, you know, inappropriate for that area. So that's it for public comment. Back up to the Planning Commission. Next item on our agenda would be correspondence. We did receive planning and zoning news in our packet, so just a little bit.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit?
I can try.
I don't know about you guys, but I'm part of the hearing.
Next item on our agenda would be correspondence. We do have planning and zoning news in our packet. Anything else that anyone received? I think so. Next item would be old business. We don't have any old business. We're going to skip over the special land use that was on our agenda that was withdrawn and move right on to administrative review number 1086 for the FISH, for site plan review waiver. Mr. Wojcikowski or Smith, who's going to give us a little overview here?
So this request before you today is to waive certain site plan review standards that would normally be required for, with the site plan review submittal. So the applicant here today is seeking a change of use within the building, 5131 South Saginaw Street, which was previously Aldo Bakery. And per the ordinance, any change of use in land or building to a different occupancy or type would require a full site plan review. So this is a request from the administrative staff to waive some of those standards, to allow them to submit an application that doesn't necessarily meet all of the typical standards. So I just wanted to, it's a little confusing, it's kind of a unique situation, but I think putting that out there to keep that in mind as I go through some more of the details, that we haven't actually received any site plan or application for this, we're asking to waive some of those standards. So the use, the previous use in the building was a bakery, and the requested use is a food pantry or food bank, which is not specifically defined or regulated within the zoning ordinance, but it is clearly not a restaurant use like the previous occupant. So we did look at the ordinance and note that it does permit similar uses in the GC zoning district, such as offices for nonprofits, civic or social institutions, community facilities both type 1 and 2, places of worship, and banks with drive-throughs within the GC district. So those are some of the other, the similar uses that might have similar characteristics that are permitted in the district. So we're here today on behalf of staff asking that the requirement for a full engineered site plan be waived and that they be permitted to submit a site plan that would be reviewed administratively based on the information that we're discussing this evening.
Okay.
So the information, so if you look at page two of the letter that was provided on August 25th from Giffords Webster, I'll just kind of read it off. The ordinance provides the Planning Commission comprehensive list of submittal items. If the project involves a change in use within an existing building, when the use will be similar or less intense than the past use in terms of parking. So as far regarding parking, we have received information that six parking spaces would be required for employees and volunteers. But we did, upon a site visit, note that the parking lot appeared to be in disrepair and it's kind of unclear how that would be dealt with. So we feel like that would be something that would be good to discuss with the applicant so that they can submit the proper information when they do submit for a site plan. Traffic generation, which we were told will be controlled through pre-arranged pickup times so that there's not a lot of traffic backup and that everyone's not showing up at certain times. And then there's also notes related to drainage, which does not appear to have any change. Utility needs, which does not appear to have any change. Noise, which is another element we would ask that you discuss with the applicant to ensure that there's, discuss the extent of outdoor activity. Aesthetics, we haven't received any information regarding facade or exterior changes or other external impacts. So essentially, for staff, request for staff to review this administratively, we would like to see a sketch plan with some parking and the circulation and drive-through information on there, but that's totally up to the Planning Commission to decide if you would like to waive the normal standards and just have that. Other options would be a full site plan submittal that meets all the standards that would then go to the Site Plan Review Committee.
Thanks. Jeremy, did you have anything you wanted to add? Nope. I guess I've got a couple questions for the applicant and then we'll probably get some other questions pop up from the Planning Commission. I heard the word "drive-through." Are you actually expecting to have a drive-through? Is there people coming and picking up things and you carry it out the door?
That drive-through, well, if you see the, the way it comes in off Southampton, they will come in, we are planning on having a intercom system where they'll stop and say, "Hi, it's Dan, I'm here to pick up my 3 o'clock food." We will already have that pre-packed and take it out to them, probably. They won't be there any more than five or six minutes, then they can pull right back out into South Saginaw. As far as the parking that's there, walking it around and looking at the old yellow lines, there's probably enough for at least 12 people parking. But we're planning on just having minimal staff that's in there and we're all volunteers, so there are no employees. And basically, we're planning on having a receptionist, someone in the office, and then two or three people who will be helping those people that are driving up to get food.
Well, they're not actually going up to like a drive-up window like you would at a restaurant or anything.
No.
They just notify you, "Hey, we're here," and you carry it out.
Right, right.
And what kind of volume?
Right now, we are working out of Hill Funeral Home and we probably have 25 to 30 people a day coming through, but again, they are.
Scheduled out.
Scheduled out. And then we will be opening more hours because we're a little more limited over there. By far, with our space just to put out food, we've only got like 350 square foot and we came from 3,500. So it's been extremely challenging that I know more and get it filled up and the people come in and it's wiped and we go to our off-site storage and bring more food up over for the next day.
What are your plans for the sign? I mean, the Planning Commission doesn't really have jurisdiction over the sign, that would be under separate permit, but I'm just curious.
Oh, sign to put up there where it currently says?
People know where to find you.
Right. It will simply have the FISH logo and say "FISH of Grand Blank" and our phone number.
You're going to change the sign, I'll put a different panel on or something.
Right, right. And we feel that by putting pantry in there, that might cause some traffic that we really would prefer not to have, so we're just saying "FISH of Grand Blank." And then through the schools, through the media, social media, then we let people know where we are once we're able to open up so they can start coming over.
I notice it looked like there's been a little bit of repair maybe done in the parking lot there?
Yes, there has been. Our donor came in and did some patching on it and, as he had promised. And that's a little longer term to look at what it would take to resurface it. Right now, the biggest concern is getting the ovens and stuff out. We're essentially gutting it. It is going to stay the same parameters, but we're gutting it and putting in shelving and whatnot that will fit our needs so that we can start getting folks in there because we're ramping up real quick for our fall season and holiday and the volume will increase a whole bunch.
Looks like you almost got a dumpster full there.
Pardon me?
Looks like you almost have a dumpster full.
Oh, yeah, that's the second one. There was some water damage that had to be repaired and so we've been working on that.
Any questions from other Planning Commission members?
Yeah, question. Are you planning any landscaping? I mean, maybe not immediately, but.
We've already had master gardeners coming in telling us what they're going to do.
Wonderful.
Yes, we're very excited about that and how we can decorate the front of it and make it look nice. And as far as changing the outside of the building, not really any plans there. It's in good shape now, but getting a little bit of color in there probably wouldn't hurt.
Right. One of the issues that the Planning Commission has been discussing for a long time is trying to make that area of Saginaw.
Right, right. It's a lot more attractive. Putting some window boxes out there and they'll require a little bit of upkeep and then putting on perennials that, I mean, like I said, we've got a couple master gardeners that are just waiting to get in there and waiting for approval tonight so they go home and start digging up some plants and bring them over.
Mr. Smith, you had?
There's work already being done inside that building?
Well, we're just basically cleaning up some of the rainwater and stuff like that.
Okay, so no construction, no demo?
No, 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 nothing like that. It's looking at the water, getting it running again, that type of thing. Because like I said, it's, it's critical that we start getting more space out there where we can help the folks because we will have upwards, we'll be helping upwards probably to 1,000 people just for Christmas holiday. And with the event of the, many of our customers who are on food stamps and that extra is going to be cut out as well as the unemployment, so we're expecting our numbers. We had been up until now a steady 400 people a week and they are all Grand Blank residents. They are not people from outside of the community or whatnot, they're people who live here. And, and as John said earlier, as far as how many that we deliver to that do not have any means of transportation or a support system, we help over 100 people a week with drivers taking food to their homes. So we get to see quite a bit of the need within the community that for the most part other people don't see because they're not involved in it. So I'd appreciate any and all expediency so that we can get going, but I appreciate any and all support for the projects that we are doing. We have been here, as many of you know, since 1973 and this will be the very first time ever that we've had a permanent building. Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
So the building's owned by Mr. Nanoshi, is he?
No, it is now and he has gifted it to FISH of Grand Blank.
So physically we own the building?
Okay.
Correct.
My question there. Mr. Yansho?
So you mentioned that the roof was leaking, apparently the roof, and there's going to be other building maintenance. How does that get funded or taken care of?
We have some money set aside as well as we have applied for some grants that will take care of that.
And it looks like there's a walk-in refrigeration on site?
Yes, there is a beautiful, huge walk-in freezer and a walk-in cooler that will accommodate the foods that we, we have. And basically, they are both working. I'm thinking it'll take a little while because that cooler is 10 by 20, just, I mean, it's a room in itself, that we will use some smaller ones that we have ourselves for right now until we grow into it so that we don't have to put out a huge utility bill. But I also understand that if there's an issue with the generators or compressors, then we can, that thing stays there, but we can put in more energy-efficient equipment, generator, compressor, whatever. You guys know.
So I, I don't take advantage of your services, thank goodness, but do you, you deliver fresh produce as well to people?
When we are able to get it from the USDA or from the food bank. With COVID, we, up until August, we were getting boxes every week that had produce and milk and dairy products in them. But then the USDA cut back and what the food bank is getting now is basically going out on their trucks. So when we can, we try to add to it, but we do give them food enough for at least six meals a week. And then figuring some of that is going to be leftovers and there is produce, vegetables, canned vegetables, canned fruit, and so forth.
A little bit off topic, but as far as produce is concerned, can home gardeners, if they have excess tomatoes or cucumbers, can they bring those in?
I have zucchini and tomatoes and summer squash and fresh brown eggs. And yes, we put them out when people come in and first come, first served. We also do get butter and cheese and sometimes we're able to get eggs as well. And for some clients, we do take milk to them as well because they don't have a way to go to the store.
Okay, great. Mr. Smith?
We had conversations a few weeks ago regarding that vacant parcel next door.
Correct.
Did Mr. Nanoshi donate that as well?
Yes, he did. It is all part of the same.
Is that going to be utilized for parking or?
That's, right now, I, my hands are full. And in the future, perhaps, yes. That would be kind of what I'm thinking as we grow larger, that we may need that, but right now, the biggest thing is getting that building open and our food out to the hands of the folks that need it.
Just so you're aware, if there's any kind of expansion, you'll have to come back for another.
Oh, yes, yes, that, that I figured.
You're talking about the parcels just south of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from Planning Commission? The other, only other comment that I have is I'd like to see, and I don't know what you're planning, striping for the parking.
Correct, yes.
Back end and just make sure that the size of the parking stalls meet the current ordinance. We have different sizes depending upon whether it's a perpendicular pole end or whether you're on an angle. It looks like the width across there might be a little bit tight for perpendicular parking. You might be able to go to like an angle parking, that narrows up the overall a little bit. But I think you've got a good situation there where you mentioned you can come in off of Southampton, one direction, have people head right out onto Saginaw Street, so you can probably do the angle parking, I would.
Right, right. That's what I was thinking. Where do I find the specifications that I need to follow? Is that Mr. Smith as well?
Yes.
What's that?
What's that?
The specs for the parking.
That's what we were just, I was just discussing with Mr. Wojcowski here, I think it's, if I don't, I can't remember.
It's in our zoning ordinance.
It is, I think it's nineteen and a half by nine and a half, but we're going to look it up here real quick.
Yeah, let's see.
It depends on whether it's an angle park.
Nine by eighteen for parallel.
And then
With the twenty-four foot drive-by.
Thirty to fifty-three degrees is, was it eight and a half by twenty?
Yeah, eight and a half by twenty, yep.
It'd be close, you might be able to get it in and
That would be information we'd ask for.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, and the same with the sign ordinance, we're figuring that sign is still good, so we'll just follow the same parameters that are in it.
Repannelling it, we ask that you pull a permit, but we don't charge you for it.
Okay.
If you're going to remove the sign and start fresh, you have to follow today's ordinance.
Yeah, so you're better off
Why just say, I'm not, why?
Right, if you're just
Why, it fits what's not broken.
Exactly, but you still have to pull a permit, but we don't charge you for it just because we want to see what the, the message is going to be on the sign.
That sign is probably larger than what's currently allowed by ordinance, so you're better off not tearing it down.
Oh, no, I had planned out, it was more money than I wanted to spend.
Monument sign or is it a pylon sign?
It's a pylon sign.
Yep, we don't allow pylon signs anymore, so if you decide to change that sign, it'll have to go to a monument sign.
Don't want to do that, just change the panel.
Reface is good.
Demo, no, no, refacing is okay for now, repannelling, that's fine, but if, if they decide to go new, they'll have to be demoed in a new monument, it'll have to be put into our current standards.
Very good.
Ms. Chair, I was thinking, you probably should check the sign ordinance because if that property's been abandoned, then maybe, you know, I mean, it's a non-conforming sign, and it's been abandoned, maybe it loses its sort of grandfathered status as a, I call it a pole sign, but I don't.
It's the same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
How long has it been vacant?
Three years.
By the way, I don't
The ordinance says a year.
That's what I was afraid of.
Need to look into that, I don't, because I'm a little concerned on the wording abandonment. It was actually owned by the family and then sold to Nanoshi, so it wasn't, define that for me, I guess, I mean, the taxes were paid, the property was never really in
To, that's something, that's, I mean, that's part of the sign, that's, that's all handled administratively by
Yeah.
So that's something that I'll have
Take a look at that.
Take a look at that and see what that is, yeah?
Okay.
Well, we're going to get the inserts to the sign.
Before you do, let, we need to double-check to see, like Ms. Coulter's saying, that's, I'm hoping that that, the definition of abandonment is like Mr. Anderson's saying, that I hope we don't, we don't have to take it down is what we're getting at, and you don't, you know, that's what I'm saying. We're trying to avoid that.
Yes, please.
Definitely clarify that.
We're going to have to clarify that, so I will get with you on that one.
Okay.
So the son has requested the sign panels?
Pardon me?
The son has requested you give him the sign panels, or are you offering them to him?
Yes, for old time's sake.
Nifty, unrelated business this, because the property's not owned by him, but I grew up with Aldo Savati's son, so.
Oh, yes, you did.
Spent some time in that bakery.
Yes.
Swept those floors a couple of times.
Okay, so unless there's any other questions, I guess we'd maybe take a motion as to whether you want to allow this to just advance administratively, is that appropriate?
Yeah, that would be the, and then any information that you would require staff to , you know, definitely, so we discussed parking and drive-through circulation. I think, hearing that there's a speaker, I think some of the details about the location and potential just decibel level of the speaker, I know it's adjacent to residential, so we like to just make sure we're not being, you know, intrusive to the neighbors.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Coulter.
I have another procedural question. I'm not so sure the planning commission really needs to rule on the waiver at this point. As I read the provision in the zoning ordinance, the waiver can be granted by the, the Planning and Zoning Department or the Site Plan Subcommittee, Site Plan Review Subcommittee, and then it's just reported to the planning commission, so
I think they're asking for our input to make sure that they're not doing something
Yeah, but I mean, I'm saying procedurally, I'm not sure we actually have to
We can
Ode on waiver of
I'd like the motion to have the direction, I would.
As mentioned, I think, we've heard the term "drive-through," I don't really know if that's appropriate, but because it's, I guess, at least I think of a drive-through as being a window that you pull up to, but
Could you call it just a call-in station?
Yeah, pickup lane, the only concern I have is stacking. I know you're having them scheduled, but if it's the busy time of the year?
Well, they'll still be scheduled, busy or not, yeah. I mean, that's going to be something, same as we enforce and have for many years at Hill Funeral Home, is that there are only so much there, or the traffic, and if the people miss or are chronically late, then they are dropped from the roll until they can behave, so to speak.
Worried about stacking into that Hampton.
Right, right, yeah, no, like I said, everything's going to be right there by the door, the way it's designed, we can go out that side door, walk along the side, put it in their vehicle, they can go on through, and like I said, it shouldn't be more than five or six minutes max, and they'll even be there. So if we go with a ten to twelve minute delay system, that should cover it.
Okay.
And noise, I did see that on there, and I don't know why they're hooping and hollering, we're having parties over there, you don't hear any noise.
Not playing to bang a drum every time
No.
I know we've had it with like even gas stations that have little speakers on the pumps, sometimes just that even little noise just all day long can, you know, we just want to make sure that we're
Right, yeah, no, it'd just be a silent buzzer kind of thing like the schools have, where you just beep and, and somebody will answer you from the phone inside, letting you know, or that somebody will be right out, and, yeah. Okay?
What are we looking at here? Want the staff to review parking, traffic pattern, traffic flow through the parking lot, and expect a traffic study and sign?
That can be handled probably under the sign permit, I would say the speaker or noise.
Okay, so leave the sign off the motion, just to
Yes, yes, sign I can handle myself, yep, that'll, I'll look into Ms. Coulter's question regarding the abandonment, so I'll have to get a definition on that.
Clear that up. Okay, well, I personally don't have any issues with, I don't even have the board member want to comment or like that, I think it's a good use for a vacant building with great location.
Yeah, for sure, definitely.
Yeah, it's excellent. I'm sorry, I can't
I said a great, looks like a great location and a good use of the building, so.
Oh, it is, it's a wonder because you're right down from Tudor State, you're right down from Maple Brook, you're right down from Parkwood, you are over by Anderson and McGrath, which are both all free lunches anyway, it's a straight shot for Brendel, Myers, any of the schools to come in, and it's right in the heart of the, the biggest need in our community. So you can't ask for a better location.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Anderson?
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the administrative site plan waiver for Fish of Grand Blank.
So the site plan will be reviewed administratively?
Yes, yep, and with administration studying particularly the parking, traffic flow through the parking lot and noise ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Anderson, is there support for that?
Support.
I think Ms. Hugo will beat you to it.
Oh.
I just raised my hand.
Support by Ms. Hugo.
Be more vocal.
Any other discussion?
Looking the other way.
If not, a vote is in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you all.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, keep it up.
Just know you're going to have to submit a plan to me, though.
Yes, I know.
Just aware, okay.
Yes, this is a big hurdle to get over, and I'll be in the office tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yep, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Next item on our agenda would be committee reports. Ms. Hugo, do you have anything to report from the Township Board?
I do not have anything to report.
You think we're planning and zoning?
I just have one thing, just remember, September sixteenth, seven o'clock here, we're having a special meeting for the master plan. We're hoping to get a approval or disapproval from the planning commission to push the master plan and the future land use map forward to the township board.
Okay. Board of Appeals, that would be what, Mr. Bush, he's not here?
The last meeting we had was only for, I'm trying to think if it was McCamlish, no, we actually approved a, at the last meeting, there was a whole barn heights requirement that we, that we pushed through, that was approved. Nothing major. I think that was the only thing that was on that agenda.
Site plan review standpoint, I don't think we've seen anything in the last month, eh?
No, we haven't. The last few things we've tried to bring to the full planning commission because there was a little controversy and there was scuttle on the internet that we were trying to hide things, making sure it was out in full view for everybody to see and in a full meeting. So as you can see, the, they were upset about the McCamlish again, so that was, you know, part of the reason why a lot of the things have been out in the open, so we wanted to make sure it's, we're a hundred percent transparent with the public.
A question, have you heard any more about the Redwoods' proposal, you know, south of the world there?
They submitted another plan to me, they asked to have it dispersed to the planning commission, their attorney Laddie's recommendation, I did not do that. If they want to talk to the planning commission again, they need to come to another meeting and do another presentation. It didn't, I can tell you, it didn't really change much, they moved a few things south of the consumer easement. Other than that, they're still going to need that waiver from the planning commission for the thirty percent detached, so that has not changed. So if they do come back, they're still going to have to get that waiver.
Mm-hmm, so it's still a residential open space
Yeah, still
type development, okay.
Anything else for me? If not, we'd entertain a motion to adjourn at seven forty-two PM?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before I make a motion to adjourn, I have a question, just to have a little brief discussion here. This centers around all of the emails that I think all of us have received and some individually have received.
My understanding is that Mr. Smith is getting quite a nice pile on his desk.
I have more than what you heard today, but the ones that we read off today were requesting to have their opposition read today. I have probably forty more that have to be read when the actual agenda item comes to before you.
So is the game plan to read them all?
The attorney Laddie has recommended that we only have to say their name and address, and that they oppose, we do not have to read their whole email, no.
Okay, because that would be
Long.
Long, long.
Something that Jeremy mentioned to me, if you received an email and he's not copied on it, go ahead and forward to him so you can add it to his pile.
Please.
I have a question.
Sure, sure.
If they put in the letter that they are requesting that it be read at the meeting, isn't it law that they have read it?
That's an attorney question, unfortunately, he's not here today. I will bring that up to him again, but from what the conversations that I've had with our attorney, all we're required to do is to, if they send an email, is that they are the name, address, and that they're opposed, we don't have to read the whole email. If they want to be
Ask them, because if, usually if they have that language in there, I was
You did ask, man.
Not specifically that portion of it, so I will get re-clarification for that, and if that's the case. And these were just asking to be, they were opposed today, nothing asked for full emails today, so.
And it is noted on public record.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all clear and everybody knows what's going on, so it's not that we're holding them back, but those are the only ones that were requested to be
Just a question, I mean, if someone is unable to appear, can they give their letter to somebody else and that person, who could attend the meeting, and then that person could read, I mean, if they really want to read it to the planning
If they really want to have the whole thing read out loud
Stay within the three minutes.
Stay within the three-minute guideline, yes, mm-hmm.
Okay, I mean, so that's another alternative for people that can't be here and, but want their letter actually read to the planning commission, just think, give it to someone else to read.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, I'd be pleased to make a motion that we adjourn at seven forty-five.
Yeah, so there for another minute, huh?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Banderski to adjourn, support by Mr. Anderson, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero.